Good evening. Just my microphone. My name is Jason Delisle. I'm president of the Speedway Town Council. It's 7:00 PM on June 10th, 2024, and I'll call this meeting to order. We'll first start off with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do our introductions. To my right is our town manager, Grant Kleinhans.
Good evening.
And town councillor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Town councillor Sean Harold.
Good evening.
And to my left is our clerk treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Town councillor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And our vice president, Extergen.
Good evening.
All right, our first item is approval of our minutes from the May 13th, 2024 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minute meetings from our previous session.
I'll second that.
All right, any questions, comments on the meetings? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting passes 5-0. All right, our next item is approval memorandum of our joint executive session of the Speedway Town Council and the Speedway Redevelopment Commission on May 13th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum if I could speak tonight. Man, it's been a while since we've done this. Yeah, and approval of our memorandum of joint executive session on the, of the Speedway Town Council and Speedway Redevelopment Commission on May 13th, 2024.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of passing our memorandum, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, next up is a presentation of a gift from Motegi, Japan, and Stacy Merritt is here to give us a little bit more info.
All right, thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time this evening. Again, I'm Stacy Merritt, and I am currently the president of Speedway Foreign Exchange, Motegi. I was recently contacted by JASI, the Japanese American Society of Indiana, last month, and asked if I'd be willing to participate in the reception to celebrate the 25th anniversary of Indiana-Tochigi sister state prefecture relationship. I gladly accepted. Just for relation, Motegi is in the Tochigi prefecture, which is comparable to Speedway in the state of Indiana. I sent them some, a brief history of the Speedway-Motegi relationship, along with some pictures of our trips to Motegi, and as well as pictures of their visits to here in Speedway for their PowerPoint presentation. I also presented the governor Fukata of Tochigi, Japan, a gift on behalf of the Speedway Foreign Exchange and on behalf of the town of Speedway, and in return, he presented me with a gift that I would like to pass along to the town of Speedway. The gift I gave Governor Fukuta was a crafted wooden art by Payne Craft. It was in the state of, it's the state of Indiana with the pagoda and any car and the race flag, because this was a state sistership relationship, so I liked the Indiana woodwork and then the racing piece for Speedway. You can, if you're familiar, Payne Art sells at Bearn's Designs, so a little plug there for him. Governor Fukuta was very proud of the fact that Tochigi is the home of the most famous strawberries in the world, and he referred to them as the strawberry kingdom. So I believe in the big box, it is strawberry cakes, so share. I did not open, but I just wanted to give this to you guys as.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Grant. Okay, well, thank you.
There is a gift in there, so he told me to, to make sure it gets used. I don't know what it is. So, have luck with that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, our next item is special event request for the 2024 Hometown Community Parade, and Gina Grove is here with more information.
Hello, good evening. I'm Gina Grove. I'm here on behalf of the Speedway Hometown Parade, and we are a nonprofit and a small committee consisting of myself and Lain Warner and Christina Young. We are proposing that we bring back the Hometown Parade for a second year, and that this year we have the parade on the evening of Speedway Homecoming, which is Friday, September 27th. We were thinking that the parade would begin at 5:00 PM that Friday evening, starting at the same route as last year. IMS Lot 2, which is near 21st Street in Maine, travel over Winton Avenue, head north on Winton and, sorry, travel over to Winton Avenue and then head north and cross Lindhurst into the high school parking lot, where we would end up at the high school just in time for the homecoming game to watch the spark plugs beat Monrevia Bulldogs. So, we would love the support of the town council for this proposal to hold the parade again this year, preferably on this Friday evening, just in time for the homecoming. And we also understand that there's many fees involved in an event like this, so we are requesting that the town council consider waiving these fees, and we thank you for
Any questions for Gina while we have her up here?
No questions, but the event was amazing last year. Do you know off the top of your head how many folks we had involved and just?
Oh goodness, I should have reviewed my numbers before coming. We had over 80, 80 groups, I know, that were involved as participants.
Yeah, it was lots of participation, lots of involvement from the community, so yeah, it was, it was a fun time, and I know the kids loved being in the parade, getting to walk through town, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't, I guess my only question was just, you guys did so good last year, like how, do you make it better? I mean, is it just more participation? Is there, it was such an amazing first event, so excited to have it back, and just any other changes maybe that you guys or feedback? Everything I saw was positive, but I didn't know if you guys had any other additional thoughts.
I know, I know, last year we initially were going to plan for it to be on a Saturday afternoon, and now, thinking back, I can't remember what caused us to have to change. I think it was because of, there was going to be a large volleyball tournament at the high school, and where several schools were going to be at the Speedway High School, so parking there was gonna, it wasn't gonna work. So we moved it to Sunday, and that, I wasn't sure how that was gonna work out, but it was a good turnout. So, you know, this Friday evening, I'm hoping that people can kind of adjust their schedules. I know getting off of work might be challenging for some, but hopefully with, you know, people just wanting to support and be there, they'll kind of adjust their schedules a little bit and make it work.
Yeah, I'm excited. I think Friday will be fun.
Thank you.
Like leading into the game, yeah.
All right, well, I will make a motion to approve the request for the special event of the 2024 Hometown Community Parade as presented, as well as waiving the fees for the permits.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, any other additional questions, comments? Grant, I actually had a quick question for you.
Yes.
So this, this had mentioned, in addition to waiving fees, some assistance from our street department and our police, or we've communicated with?
Yeah, so we have the, we have the committee meetings, police were involved, street was involved, they understand what it is that they're, and it's good this year because it's Friday night, that, that's a, a lot easier than a Sunday to get some of our staff, police officers, et cetera, so yeah.
Okay.
Yep, they are aware. So, so just so you know, these events, they go through that committee, Cheryl vets them, asks questions, we then have that committee, they sit. If it ever gets to you, we have reviewed those and understand, okay, this is what we have to do, and we basically approve. We have given our recommendation to the council that it's okay to approve.
I figured that was the case.
Yes.
But just wanted to make sure.
Good question, yep.
All right, if there's no additional comments or questions, call for a vote. So all those in favor of approving our special event request for the 2024 Hometown Community Parade, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, our next item is approval of our fire chief contract. Grant?
Yes, so the reason this is coming before you is we have a longtime fire chief who put his name into the retirement program, the drop. What's drop stand for again?
Better retirement option.
There you go. And that is coming up this year on July 3rd. He wants to continue serving, we want him to continue serving as our fire chief, so we've put together this civilian fire chief agreement that was vetted with the council, discussed. It identifies what this means. There is no pay increase, there is some identification of seniority for town benefits, that, the like, and then some different language. For instance, he will receive the same percentage increases that the fire union does, and that's similar to what we did for Chief Upchurch last year as well. He also has some leave that is carried over pursuant to our discussion with the council. He did reduce that leave by using some of those days. He cut about, I think it was almost 100 hours off of that total. And as we talked about in the administrative session, employees save this, this time over in case there are injuries, health issues, there's a policy that we can carry a certain amount over that can cover us if we have whatever it might be. That's why those leave days are important, and, and our long-term employees take that seriously. So with that, I'll answer any questions. The only other thing is we will, because we will not be paying into police and fire retirement, we are, we will be, have agreed to pay $500 into his 457 fund in lieu of that payment that we will no longer be making. Those are the only other real changes to the, or significant elements of the agreement. We recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire chief contract.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of approving our fire chief contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, chief, for all the work you've done for the town, too.
Welcome to the team. You're now held to a different standard, chief.
It's only 34 years coming.
All right, next item is our approval of engagement letter for legal representation with Kroger, Gardis, and Regus.
Yes.
LLP. Grant?
Yeah, not KFC, right? We had that discussion earlier, sorry, just an inside joke. You, you may have noticed this evening, our usual town attorney, Bob Clutter, is not here this evening. We have done a search for a replacement town attorney. We have appreciated Bob's service, he's been with the town for about eight years. We felt we needed a different focus and a different direction. We did vet a couple of different firms. KGR was the firm that seemed to come to the top. I know that a couple of councilors were involved in those, Vince and Nick, Philip and myself are involved in those interviews. We have every faith and confidence in Ted Nolting, Brian Bosma, and their associates, that they can do the work that we need done. Speedway is a complex community, nothing is easy in our town because of our arrangement with Unigov, City of Indianapolis, Marion County. We live by a different law and standard than other communities around us, and therefore we need a little higher level legal representation. So the agreement before you tonight is an engagement letter. We will pay them a monthly retainer fee of $5,000 to basically cover the cost of them attending our couple of council meetings a month, as well as the redevelopment commission. Anything above and beyond that, they'll put ordinances together and some simple agreements, but when we go into economic development projects or redevelopment, there will be additional charges. Legal representation in lawsuits or other, there will be additional charges, so I think it's important to make sure that is clear. Ted, I know, will be, and Ted might want to wave, we'll have him come up and sit here at the, at the table. He'll be our main point of contact. In fact, we've already set up kind of our regular meeting, monthly meeting, that is, tomorrow. We'll discuss those issues, and then they will attend the meetings of the council. If we have a lot of special meetings, that is going to be above and beyond, so we will, we'll have those discussions when we have these meetings, whether they're needed or not, if they're information gathering, and then kind of go from there. But we're excited. I did work with KGR in Brownsburg for several years. Brian Bosma, a senior partner, worked with me on a lot of economic development-related projects. I remember some of our discussions with John Force, that's a name everybody should, should know, always fun and interesting and entertaining. We have some of those characters in our town as well. I appreciated Brian's approach and some of the creativity that we use to get things done. I think they'll do a great job for us, and I look forward to working with them. I know Philip also, I think, agrees that they will do a good job for us, and we'll work together with them like we normally have done. So with that, we recommend approval of this agreement. There are some exhibits, there are hourly rates for that work, above and beyond, as well as what they can charge on expenses, filing fees, extra travel, that kind of thing. So I'll answer any questions that you might have, and then we'll ask Ted to take his seat up here if it's approved. We didn't want him sitting up here until it was approved.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval of engagement letter for legal representation with Kroger, Gardis, and Regus LLP.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions or comments?
Well, I will make the comment, you know, like Grant mentioned, Vince and I met with them about a month or so ago. They were able to answer all my questions that I had, very comfortable, also talking with Philip and Grant. Absolutely feel like this is the, the best choice for, for the town, and some of the, I would call them just, issues and improvements I want to see from our contracting and other representation, I think they will do an amazing job for us, so I'm excited to have them on
I'll second that. No, I think it brings a whole another aspect to our legal representation, and I think it's, it's been brought to light several times in the past, that basically you're gonna have to have somebody that is, has a clear understanding of the path that we're gonna be following down the future, and I am glad to see them on our team, and it will definitely, I think, help us to stay on track and, and serve the people of the town of Speedway.
All right, if there's no other comments, call for a vote. So all those in favor of approving our agreement, our engagement letter for legal representation with KGR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll get you a name tag as soon as possible.
Yeah, we just used the generic town attorney there, so.
All right, our next item, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I was just gonna say welcome, and I know Brian, appreciate you coming. I can't remember your associate's name, I know we, on a teams.
Can I say?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and first of all, we're very pleased to have the opportunity to work with the council, and our firm has represented each, as general counsel, each of the other excluded towns, or cities and towns. So to your point that you, we know Unigov, and we know the problems it presents for an excluded town like Speedway. Ted will have primary, we work as a team, this is Zach Nicely, an associate that supports both Ted and I in our municipal practice. He came to us in the Attorney General's office, where he had been for 10 years, two years as a deputy attorney general, and is, is our first fill-in if one of us have a, a engagement that we can't make. But we're a team, and you could see any of the three of us here on a given night. Ted lives about 10 minutes that way, so he's gonna be the first nominee. He and his wife also have three, one-year, and younger children, including twins that were just born here about two months ago. So you could see any of us, and particularly on the redevelopment issues, I'll probably have a little bit more involvement there. So we're just very excited about it and look forward to working with the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item now is approval of our guaranteed energy savings contract with Leopardo Group. Grant?
Yes, so this evening, in the audience, Heather Geray with Leopardo Group, and then Ingram, Bridget Ingram, I don't know what I'm, I cannot get your name correct. I talk to you all the time. With Westler, who is a part of the project team, they are here tonight to answer any questions, but as you know, and this agreement has been reviewed and vetted by Ted, he did make some recommended changes, and we, we got those incorporated. This project is identified for some energy savings at our wastewater plant, where we can capture the methane gas that we currently burn off as a waste product, capture that to turn a turbine that will generate electricity for us to use in our operations, thereby saving us dollars. Under the Indiana State statute, the guaranteed energy savings projects, they will do an investment-grade audit. If you approve this agreement tonight, they'll do an investment-grade audit with a fee of $181,000. If the project is successful, and they can do a project that will save us money annually and pay for the debt service that we need to look into issuing for this $2.5 to $3 million project, then they will manage and oversee that for several, as long as we ask them to do and contract with it. But this really is a, to me, it's a high priority project for us because it generates a renewable energy source that we're currently just wasting, so we're, we're kind of being green there. We're also saving some greenbacks over time. We have to pay that debt service off, but then that will be an annual savings that can be reinvested into the plant operations and employee costs, et cetera. But it's also a very forward-looking project, and I think if this project goes well, I think our goal would be to identify other projects potentially that we can enter into. So tonight, this agreement, and let me just hit some of the high points, and then Heather, if you or your team wishes to come up, as I mentioned, the agreement is telling them to go ahead and do this detailed engineering assessment, investment-grade audit. They will work through that, then they will develop a guaranteed savings performance contract that you will be asked to approve. There is a timeline here. Tonight, if you approve it, June 10th, the letter of intent will be authorized. They will provide us the report in September, by September 30th. Final contract will be approved by October 28th. If you remember, one of the goals we had of this was to take advantage of some federal tax credits. To get that, we have to have 5% of the contract billed to the contractor by the end of the year. We think this timeline allows us to do that, and they will work according to this agreement to that end. I also mentioned that fee, it is listed.
Top of page three.
There you go, top of page three, $181,000 and change. Part of that is Westler's fee, the other part is the administrative audit. The only, the only area that we might have to pay that is if we decide we don't want to do the project. If they bring a project to us that says, hey, it's gonna fund itself, and we said, no, we're not interested, we will owe them that money and break the agreement. They're investing that money into this project, which will be paid out over, over the, from the cost of the project, but it's really a good deal for us because I think we can save more than $200,000. We'll just have to see ultimately what the numbers say. So we're excited about this, we think it's a great project. Thanks, Philip, working with me on this, and Brad Sloan, the wastewater superintendent, identified this opportunity with Leopardo Group. And also, we appreciate Fagri Drinker, our lobbyist who also made this introduction, and, and we think it's a good relationship for the town to have. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have, or Heather, or your team, if you want to come up to answer any questions or correct things that I might have mistakenly said.
No, as always, you did a great job, Grant, thank you. Great to see everybody again, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Just one item to maybe point out is that this fee is not going to be payable right now, it's, it will be incorporated into the project should you move forward.
Yep.
Any questions?
That's what I meant, that, as, as I said that, that's what I was trying to say. She said it more effectively than me.
Just wanted to clarify that we're not submitting it in your voice today.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's not free.
Do you want to have a motion?
No, I'll make a motion of the approval of the guaranteed energy savings contract with Leopardo Group.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments for Heather, Grant, or otherwise?
I'm just looking forward to starting this project.
As are we.
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys moving so quickly. We have that pretty tight deadline that we want to meet, but we're confident we can meet it as long as we're, you know, moving forward like we are, so.
Heather, I know we're moving forward with some sampling. Worst-case scenario, if that doesn't come back to the specifications that you thought it was going to, what are we on the hook for?
Bridget here can maybe answer more questions about the sampling, but if it won't work with the program, it won't produce the CHP system, it won't produce the savings, so you wouldn't be on the hook for anything. It has to be self-funded.
Thank you.
But if you do have any questions specifically about the sampling, Bridget would be your girl to talk to, not me.
And Philip is referencing, we, we had to have a contractor come in to do, and we're asking them to do two different tests on two different trips to make sure we get a good variance on the moisture level of the methane and everything. We didn't want it all on the same day, we're hoping to get that over a couple, couple trips. So if that comes back well, we will then initiate the next step, which will involve a lot of additional work.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our guaranteed energy savings contracts with, contract with Leopardo Group, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Heather.
Thanks, Heather.
Next item is approval of right-of-way services agreement with GAI Consulting for the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, we have representatives from GAI, Ron Webb and Marcia Crainy-Blevin, so we appreciate them being here. Ron is the project manager, project engineer, we've been working with him over the past couple of years, once we received the MPO grant. So what is before you this evening is an agreement that amends our current agreement with them regarding. with them regarding right-of-way services. If you remember earlier this evening, I mentioned that we had to add three additional properties. So the fees associated with this amendment add those three additional properties. Those three additional properties cost $48,555 to that price, which involves right-of-way exhibits and different engineering that they need to do to verify those, as well as assistance with acquisition services as a part of that scope. That'll bring the total right-of-way cost to $96,855. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have regarding this project at this time.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of right-of-way of services agreement with GAI Consulting for the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project.
I'll second it.
All right. Any questions, comments?
I don't know, Grant, if you just want to maybe elaborate or just update on just the total project. I know we.
Sure.
But just so that people know what.
Sure. So just real quick, a summary of the project. This is a pedestrian improvement project, basically that stretches west of Cunningham Road all the way to the east where the Kohl's entrance is to the Brixmore Shopping Center. As you notice, there are no sidewalks there. So we have people regularly that cross from all the apartments to the south, across that busy five lanes of traffic, sometimes get stuck in the middle. It's dangerous. This project will allow people to cross safely at certain spots with either a traffic signal or a hawk signal in the middle of the block, and then allow them access to and from their homes on a nice sidewalk. Not having sidewalks on our gateway to the town in that area really, to me, is not indicative of the type of community that we are. We do like connectivity and walkability, and this project will help clean that up. So we're through preliminary design. We're probably 75% done with the project design itself. We're trying to finalize the right-of-way so that we can meet the deadline of December for a bid, and then we'll, we've put together a preliminary financing plan. As you know, the costs are higher than expected. We got the grant in 2020, early '22, and three years later, it's, things have just increased in cost. And that's the difficulty with these, with these grants that have a four- or five-year life to them. You just never know when, when it goes to construction. We have, I think, high estimates at this point. I've heard other communities that have gotten a little better construction costs, but that will yet to be seen once we put it out on the street in December and get those bids. And then the council at that point will either award that contract, or decide that we don't do it, or can't do it, or we'll probably write the agreement such that we have different alternatives in there that we can do. That's something we'll work on over the next couple of months. But I think it's a good project. I think it meets our goals and objectives for the community, the comprehensive plan to discuss connectivity and walkability, and I think this was a good, it's good that we're getting $2.3 million from the MPO. That's money that we don't have to spend, but I'll answer any other questions that you might have. I hope that answered your question.
No, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I had a quick question.
So we were looking at some diagrams in our executive session, and are any of those diagrams,
first of all, are they finalized? And can we share those with anyone? I'm sure people are wanting to kind of visualize.
Sure.
What we're talking about.
So we actually had a public open house. When was that? February, I believe. All of those exhibits, those actually were used in that meeting, and we had about 20 folks that showed up. We did a press release shortly after that identifying those. I can't remember if those are on our website, but we can definitely make sure and put that There's nothing, we want people to know what we're doing and why we're doing it, definitely.
So I guess I'll just say, if you, if we can't find them on the website, and you have questions or want to, feel free to send Grant or myself.
Absolutely.
And we'll, we'll make sure we get those to you.
Yeah. It is a very cool project. I think people that came were very excited to see the attention given to it because of all the people that have to walk across that street.
All right. I'll call for a vote. So all those in favor of approving our right-of-way services agreement with GAI Consulting for Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Ron, Marcia. All right. Our next item is approval to addendum number three to owner-engineer agreement between the town of Speedway and American Structure Point for the lead service line inventory funding application.
It's a mouthful.
Yes.
And only two more items, and then I'll be quiet the rest of the evening, I promise you. As you know, we did receive $100,000 grant through the Indiana Finance Authority to identify lead service lines in our community. We have worked with American Structure Point on the grant application, as well as the secondary grant application. This is the actual second grant that we're receiving. The grant is in the amount of $100,000. The engineering agreement that you're approving tonight is actually not being paid by us. It is being paid by the Indiana Finance Authority out of that $100,000. So their fee will be $21,000 for the, what they're going to do for us. That leaves $79,000 for us to go about the process of identifying further and understanding where these lead service lines are. There will be any number of means that will try to do that, a little bit of community education. We'll probably purchase some testing kits where people can test their own lines. We'll also have our staff do as much testing as we can from the meter pits as we go along. It's not really identified exactly how we're going to do that. That's part of what we're trying to figure out with this grant. But we did receive the grant, so this engineering agreement needs to be approved so that they can begin working on that, and I think we have to have this done over the next year. So we'll, we'll need to get started on this fairly quickly. But this also was a high priority project from the previous council that has carried over, and this is the second kind of grant that we've received for this project. And Structure Point's been very helpful in, it's small work, a little bit of annoying work, but they've done a good job keeping it, I think, organized and moving forward.
Motion?
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, for the approval to addendum number three to owner-engineer agreement between the town of Speedway and American Structure Point for the lead service line inventory funding application.
I'll second that.
All right. Any question or comments?
So, Grant.
Yes.
Once, so this gets done, kits go out, what is the next step then? So say my, I've got lead service line, what is the next step after that?
That's a great question. The next step is trying to determine how we're going to remediate that, and that will be another, another project with a significantly higher cost. The identification is not the hard part, the removal is going to be the hard part.
Okay.
And it's important to remember that the service line goes from the meter pit from the town into the home, so a majority of these are personal, privately-owned service lines. We're trying to identify those because we've been required or mandated to do that. Then we'll have to figure out what the next step is. And I don't know that I have an answer for you until we really understand the, the gravity of what, what we've got.
So, Grant, you know, given the fact that those lead lines were put in at a period of time by a certain contractor at that point in time, have we identified, or have they identified what, you know, how old the house must be before?
Yeah, I, I don't have the exact number, but it's, if homes built before 1950 typically were lead service lines. So that, that's a good portion of our community.
Okay.
Now, it doesn't mean everybody's line is, just because you were built before 1950, a contractor could have done a different, different material, or they may have replaced that plumbing already.
Right.
As you know, over the past 30 years, you couldn't really buy a house without disclosing whether it has lead pipes, and more often than not, then people either wouldn't buy, or they'd have to fix that to then sell the home.
Right.
But it, it's about identifying, and we kind of know some of the areas that we believe, but this will help narrow that down.
Okay.
If I were guessing, I, what do we have, 5,500 homes, I think, in Speedway? I would guess 20 to 25% are probably lead service lines, if I were guessing. And that's probably on the high side, but based on age.
So then that would be a cost to the homeowner or the town?
I don't know at this point. We're not sure at this point. Yeah, there are some federal grants that we could apply for.
Okay.
Which could defray those costs. We'll have to determine that when we get to that point.
Okay.
We did increase, I'm not committing the town to anything, but we did increase our water and sewer rates to try to take care of this as an issue. It doesn't mean we're going to pay the whole freight, but I think there would be dollars in our program to do that over a several year period or help.
Okay.
Good questions.
The regulatory scheme so far has not laid out what the next steps are. So the EPA has set out mandates that then IDEM has adopted and promulgated, and right now, our obligation is to create this lead service line inventory. So, and then based on that, as all the different communities are feeding up to IDEM and EPA, the expectation was that experts will start giving additional feedback on what remediation steps would be useful. But right now, it's just an information gathering stage.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's basically just trying to determine the scale of the problem.
Yep. The magnitude of how many homes, yep.
All right. If there's no other questions, call for a vote. So all those in favor of approving our addendum number three to our owner-engineer agreement between the town of Speedway and American Structure Point for the lead service line inventory funding application, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Our next item is approval of professional services proposal with Westler Engineering for the 2023 through 2027 wellhead protection planning services. Grant.
I try to make these titles as long as possible. There's, there's like a game.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We're trying hard. This is a, a little bit of a think-ahead project. You'll notice the dates on this, 2023 through 2027. 2023 was the last time we did this. We're required to do this every five years. It's now 2024, and we're halfway through, so we, we felt it was important to go ahead and ask them for a proposal. This proposal is a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000, and will involve a series of meetings with our water staff over the next couple of years to develop updates and changes to this wellhead protection plan. As you know, we use wells, and we have a plan to identify how are we going to keep those wells clean from infiltration or inflow of other, so that's zoning, as well as other standards that we have. Even our manufacturing companies or large companies, we have standards about backflow preventers and everything else, because we have to protect the integrity of our system. So this helps them, this will help us put that updated plan together that will be due at the end of 2027, and $15,000 is a very reasonable amount for this work over the next couple of years, as they'll probably have a dozen or so meetings and calls and different information to update and develop that next update to the wellhead protection So I'll take any questions that you might have on this.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a professional service proposal with Westler Engineering for the 2023 to 2027 wellhead protection planning services.
I'll second.
All right. Any question, comments?
So from a billing standpoint, is this going to be billed all at once, or as hours incur?
It's as they incur hours, so it'll be over the next three budget years. And we put a fairly large amount for these types of projects in our professional services account in the Water Department. They have various Environmental Protection Agency requirements and IDEM requirements that we have to meet, and we typically use engineers to do. So yeah, this will, as they spend 15 hours here, they'll bill us, then that kind of thing.
All right. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our professional services proposal with Westler Engineering for our 23 through 27 wellhead protection planning services, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our next item is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. I do have requests for both for you this evening, and since we did not have our end of May meeting, the number of claims is larger than usual. Both the claims and adjustments cover the time period of May 9th through June 5th. The adjustments are for six different customers and spans three pages. The claims are 22 pages long and total $2,261,389.8.
I'll make a motion for, to approve the claims and utility adjustments as presented.
I'll second it.
Any question, comments? All right. All those in favor of approving our claims and utility adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now our reports from department supervisors, and we'll start with Cheryl McRae, first with communications.
Good evening, council. First, I want to give a shout out to Anna, or excuse me, Anna Weber and her Village of Volunteers at the Speedway Animal Rescue. During the month of May, they had 30 adoptions, 13 cats, 17 dogs. They spayed about 20 animals and currently have 15 dogs and nine cats. That's a lot of paws and fur. So if anyone's industrying and fostering or adopting, reach out to SAR. Just to run through upcoming June community events, June 12th is the ribbon cutting, that's Wednesday this week, ribbon cutting and grand doping of the long-awaited Borridge Cafe Bakery and Market. I did do a soft preview of it, and I think residents are going to be really excited about it. It's very cool. The ribbon cutting is at 10:00 a.m. Public is welcome to attend. June 15th and 16th is the Brickyard Vintage Racing Invitation at IMS. Check IMS' website for details. June 21st, we announced, sorry, we announced that Casual Conversations will be held on June 21st here at the Municipal Center. Stop by between 8:30 and 10:00 a.m. to discuss or ask any questions or topics that you're interested in. On hand will be Town Manager Grant, and then different department heads available to answer any questions or take any comments. June 21st and 22nd, St. Chris Summer Festival will be held at St. Christopher Catholic Parish Campus. Again, all the details are available on their website. I'm just throwing out the dates there. June 22nd and 23rd will be an amateur radio field day here at the Municipal Center parking lot. Details for that, you can actually go to the town website, and it will link you back to the sponsoring radio club's website for details. It will be, I guess, from the 22nd through the 23rd. It actually runs 24 hours, so the community is welcome to stop by for that as well. Other events that are currently crossing my desk are Holler Parade, Emza Street Fest, Run 317, and thank you for approving the community parade. So stay tuned for all those events. I'm talking fast because I have a lot to go through. Lastly, and this is mainly what I wanted to do, was to thank all the residents and the visitors who were here for Rockin' on Main last event, which is last month. Yeah, I have no idea how awful and responsible I felt for the challenging weather we had that day, even though I can't help it. But when I finally stood back and took a look at some of the pictures that were taken, we still had a lot of people here, even through the two rainstorms. So thank you for everyone for that, and it really was amazing. I, there's a lot of people I want to thank, so I'm going to hit a few, but not go through everyone. So Yellow Ricksaw and Clayton Anderson were both great performances. I think that's where the primary, primary group of the people ended up by the end of the night, was for the singing and the dancing, even in the rain. Staff working on Main Street restaurants and bars, as always, were amazing. I think, I don't think anyone went without food or drink that night. We had over 40 pop-up shops along the streets. went without food or drink that night. We had over 40 pop-up shops along the streets. They stayed as long as they could throughout the rain. But I've actually received comments from a lot of them wanting to return last year despite what the weather was this year. I am still working on post events of getting their feedback on what worked well, what didn't work well, along with council's feedback. And I'm still working on a lot of the post-event information right now. I want to go on and thank the team that we had on site, including Grant, Parks, Economic Development. They helped me with registration, all the on-site setup. I'm also going to thank my daughter, who took off work from teaching her last day and was here from 9:00 a.m. until 12:30 that night, helping balance, but also doing a lot of volunteer work. So appreciation to, and I can't read my own writing here.
And her husband as well. Jamie was there.
Well, he was here, he was sampling food and then going back to my house and chilling. Not a lot of credit.
I won't bring that up again. I should have known.
During, this is kind of for the, during the month of May, we had a lot of media coverage from Rockin' on Main to different traditions that have been found through the town. But to a point, we have maybe 30 coverage of media so far, so I'm still working through that as well. So we thank them for making Speedway look like we do, really good. Want to thank the Speedway Street Department, even though they asked me not to, and the police department, because I worked very closely with them in the months coming, and then actually on site that day. We ended up with over, about $25,000 in sponsorship that funds the entire event. There is no town money that pays for any of it. Expenses are roughly around $17,000, so we had enough to cover it and enough to continue building from year on and year out. We had 19 or 20 sponsors, including financial and then in-kind donations. And I'm not going to go through the list. I think Brian is going to show some of the sponsors up there so they get a little recognition. I thought he was going to.
It was, it was up there earlier.
Was it up there earlier? Okay, very good, very good. So that is all I have. Any questions, comments?
No. Rockin' on Main, despite the weather, was a great time. Loved seeing everybody come out, especially after a pretty good carb day celebration. So excellent job. Heard nothing but great things from, from everybody that I talked to.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, great event, sure. Thank you.
Great job, Cheryl. And it was more of a marathon, not a sprint. Absolutely.
It is, it is.
Let's just work harder on the weather next year, if that's okay.
Oh, I know.
Always room for improvement, right?
Right, right. I'll put you in charge of the weather then.
Well, I tell you, it cooked us the first six hours, and then it got cold.
The weather was great during setup, and we were watching it, but yeah, couldn't control it. But most people stuck it out, so it was good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our police department with Chief Upchurch.
Good evening, council. I will start where Cheryl left off, just a quick recap of our race weekend. As we've already discussed, it was somewhat challenging that weekend with the, with the weather. We incurred the four-hour delay, and, and a lot of our officers were on scene, are working that day for about 16, 18, 18 and a half hours, and they had to come back the next day. So, and during that delay, the state police, due to the fact that so many of their troopers come from distance, they had to cut about 70, 77 of those free because they would have been working about 20, 24 hours that day. So we had to backfill those, and it was, it was a challenging day. And, and we normally can get traffic out in about three hours, and we were right in that timeframe. I do believe normally with a race, when it ends at a normal time, a lot of folks will hang around and wait on traffic to leave. I think they all left at the same time this year because they were, experienced that long day, and, and I think that helped us incur a little bit more delay with the traffic that day. So nobody left, even though the stands were full. As Chief Fishburne can attest, right up until the end, the fans were, the stands were full with, with the fans. So, but we just want to thank all of our public safety partners for, for their assistance that day. We have, this coming Monday, on the 17th, we will be swearing in our newest officer, Elise Herndon. She comes to us from IUPUI. She just graduated in May. And she will be, starting on Monday, we'll be doing the ceremony at 9:30. If y'all can make it, you're welcome to come. They only last about 15 or 20 minutes, so we won't take much of your day. So we've also got a conditional offer of employment out to another individual or a candidate. He's about to undergo the physical and psychological testing on June 14th, and hopefully we can get him started sometime mid-July by the time we get through all the process. So in regards to the racing events, we do have our next race planning meeting for the upcoming Brickyard 400, which will be here before we know it. That's going to be on June 18th with all our public safety partners at Motor Speedway. In regards to our traffic, we do have an after action with all of our public safety partners that will discuss traffic, what worked, what we need to improve on. So, and with that, thus far, we have, through the end of May, we've issued 3,322 citations for, for traffic violations. So, and that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
And you mentioned this a little bit earlier when we talked, but the kind of slight adjustments due to, you know, Crawfordsville Road, or not Crawfordsville, well, that because of the 16th Street being closed.
Yes.
How well did that go?
You know, it worked well. We're going to have to make a couple of tweaks just because of the motels at the, the west end of town. If you get in the wrong lane, you're not going to make it to one of the hotels if, if you're staying with the new one on the north end, or if you're staying at the courtyard. We've already talked to the track, and they got a couple of complaints on that, and we'll tweak that. But we could have filtered a lot more traffic that way. And I think next year, we will work on the means to get more traffic going that way because we had a hard time keeping that full, and we could have moved a lot more traffic that way. So, and it's, it, we're going to have to do something when they close that bridge here. And we're going to be good through '25. I think it's '26 that'll really affect us. But, but I think it'll, it'll work out in the long run. So.
Well, thank you to both police and fire and all of public safety for that weekend. Especially, they said the weather was challenging, but I'm sure everybody was glad to get it in Sunday and not Monday.
Yes, yes. We, we weren't happy with the National Weather Service. We, we weren't happy with him. We'll just leave it at that. So, okay. Thank you.
Chief, real quick, do these two officers, does that give you guys a fully staffed?
We will be fully staffed until August. So.
And then you'll start again.
We have another retirement in August. And then we'll start working on, we'll probably have to undergo another process.
Okay.
To fulfill that.
Well, and in addition to that, I know we've been working on a part-time
Yes.
Officer policy. We have some really good officers that are retiring. They have been approached about potentially returning to work for us.
We'd like a cap for that experience.
But I know the police commission met and discussed that we're also trying to get other policies from other communities so that we can flesh that out.
Yes.
And I would expect that to come to the council in the form of an amendment to the Personnel Policy Manual in the next couple of months. But they're doing a good job of trying to be creative about how we fill needs.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
All right. Next up is fire with Chief Fishburne.
Well, I want to begin by thanking you for your confidence in me. Love this town, live here, have served here, and your confidence to do a contract with me is a little bit overwhelming. It's humbling. So I really appreciate that. I want to piggyback on a little bit of race follow-up. I also don't think people realize that when the fire trucks, when we dismiss them out of the track, we kind of do it in stages, and they go back to the stations. But this year, law enforcement and street department and public works, they're out there in the pouring rain, in the dead of dark, with people trying to get out of a track. And it's pretty daunting, you know, because I stay up there and kind of listen to those guys talk about traffic. And this year, there were some really big benefits to some of the adjustments. And the one I know Chuck's talking about is that diagonal barricade that they put across Crawfordsville Road. There was a benefit to that for public safety in that normally, when people are letting out of the track, they have to stop that traffic on Lynnhurst. Well, people could walk diagonally to get into that neighborhood because everything was turning left down Lynnhurst or right off of Lynnhurst. And when they can, I think Chuck made mention, when they can open up and send all four lanes down Crawfordsville Road West, it's really going to empty out the Auburn and, you know, the Legion lot and all of that. When you're up there, you can see it. But one of the rules I tell my friends is, the closer you park to the track, the longer it take you to get home. So walk a mile, and it'll save you two hours. But, but it was, it was a long day, and a lot of, a lot of people working. But the police officers and public works, I know downtown, Steve, what's his? Pruitt. Pruitt. His guys weren't going to get home until 2:00 in the morning from picking up barricades and stuff. And I'm sure our street department had some guys doing the same thing. So we actually started our, our new candidate today. I want to thank Philip for coming on Friday to administer the oath. Philip and I attended the graduation for the Pike Academy. It was just one guy for us, and each, I think Pike had five, Zionsville had six, Lebanon and City of Lawrence had two. Kept it under an hour, which was pretty impressive, I thought. And he started today. We're fully staffed until August. And, but, but we actually have already set up a physical and psychological for whatever candidate's name we give them. We haven't given them a name, but we plugged a spot because sometimes that can be the delay, which will then help us not have a lag in having to have overtime and running short. So we're working on that. Our, our additional runs for the month of May were around 65. We, we did 340, and 65% of that was EMS, and 35% of that was fire or other. We usually range 275 to 300. So, you know, race week, carb, and some of the qualification weekends, we get a little bit more. So that bumped us up a little bit. But other than that, that's really all I have. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, chief. All right. Next is our Parks and Rec with Tammy Smith.
Good evening. I'll start off just letting everybody know, we're in high gear with summer camps and swim lessons. Everything's going really well. We're already getting lots of compliments on the camps. We've had some issues with some of the pool, with not so much the lessons, but some technical issues with the pool at the school. The school's been great, very attentive, working with us, and hopefully we won't have any more delays. We have had to cancel two days already from temperature issues. It started off last week with too cold, and then ended up with 100 degrees today. So, but they've already contacted me today. They've gotten the water temperature coming down, and we should be good to go tomorrow. I want to thank the Fitness Boutique for partnering with Parks to do a workout at the Plaza on Main the morning before the race. It was a free workout offered, but a requested donation to the park. And we brought in $340 in donations, and I think everybody had a great time working out that morning. And that starts our funding for the Plaza on Main Entertainment. So I'm excited to start getting some stuff scheduled for that. In addition to that, the Spark Coffee has already committed to sponsoring a day of entertainment at the Plaza on Main, and that is scheduled for September 21st. I will be adding a schedule on the website soon for specifically the plaza. That will probably be done after camps are over. So, but we're going to, we're actively working on that. Summer concerts begin, the first concert is scheduled for Thursday, June 27th. And then our next concert will happen July 11th, and then each Thursday through August 15th. And then right after that, August 17th is our West India Arts and Music Festival. So lots of fun coming up in the parks. Our Market in Meadowwood will begin Thursday, July 11th. More details are coming on that real soon. I've got someone that's willing to help me this year, and she's going to be starting to promote it more on the Market in Meadowwood Facebook page. So if you're not already on that page, check it out, Market in Meadowwood. Let's see, in my so-you-know segment today, I'm going to go over vandalism. We have had some issues over the last four weeks with some vandalism again. I am working with the police department, and we're just trying to figure out what we can do. But the biggest thing for the community is, if you see something, say something. If something doesn't look quite right, please call the non-emergency number. We had some graffiti all over one of the shelters, and when I reviewed the footage, I think, I mean, it obviously just upsets me so much. But what upsets me almost as bad is all the adults walking by that look at what they're doing and just keep walking. And, you know, nobody calls it in. But we've had a door that had to be replaced on a bathroom, a fire started in a trashcan, and a message board destroyed at Meadowwood. And so, again, please, if you see something that doesn't look right, please call the non-emergency number. And in the meantime, we're trying to see if we can't get some more cameras added, and having some discussions. We're going to have some meetings with the police department, try to do some brainstorming on other things that we can try to do to help with this problem. And that's all I have today.
Well, Tammy, first, I just want to comment on the summer parks camps that you've been putting on. I know my kids have participated in darn near every single one of them. And so I guess that's what you get when you have four kids.
Right.
But thank you so much. It's been just a great experience across the board. And I know, as you mentioned, there were a couple of issues with the pools. And I just want to call out, not only did you not, did you email everybody, you also called every single family. And I don't know how many kids we have signed up, but I know it's got to be pushing 100, probably pretty close. And so.
And swim camp was supposed to start today, too. So that did put it over 100.
Yeah. So I know, just thank you for going that extra effort, because I know that was a lot of time that you spent just to make sure that you communicated that out to everyone. So thank you for that.
Yes, of course. And I do want to thank Coach Bennett as well. He, he's tremendous with the, the camps. And then I've got a really good staff right now with the swimming and, that have helped me a lot. So, yeah, it's definitely a team effort. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is our public works department with Rob Whitnig.
Good evening, council. Just wanted to get this all kind of together on a few items here. All the public works is working to get ready for their, on June 20th, our IDAM stormwater audits, which is, you know, got to be, everything's got to be as clean as can be and ready to go for them. And then the wastewater, they treated 141 million gallons of water in May. And then the water department treated 70 million gallons, and on race day was 3.7 million gallons of water for race day. So everybody was pretty busy with that. And they've been doing groundskeeping and preventive maintenance for both departments. The street department, we made it through the race, had some staff work from 4:00 p.m. until 9:00 a.m. Monday morning. So it was some long hours, great team, never gave up. And we had some individuals from wastewater come up and help us as well. But we still got it knocked out in about four, four and a half hours. So town looked pretty good after, when I left, and I think it appeared well on all the TV and when everybody's here having a good time. So that was our goal. So that's about all I have.
Yeah.
Oh, I did have one other thing to add. The lead lines, that's from the corporation to their house, not just from the meter to the house. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
So that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Corporation's in the road, so you have to dig the road sidewalk and yard up to do those repairs. It's not just from the meter to the house. So.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
And last but not least, our economic development department with Carmen Letheg.
Good evening, councilors. I'll try to be quick. We're after eight already. So, not that I'm, not that I'm looking at the watch. Okay. So here are some things I've been working on since we last met. I think I mentioned this before, but continuing to look at some of our TIF requirements that are legislatively required for us for reporting. I'll have an upcoming presentation at a redevelopment commission that's required to do annually. We'll be doing, I'll be working on that and doing that in the next couple of months. I met again with the redevelopment commission on a special planning session. It was a follow-up from the one we did, I think, back in the beginning of May. So this planning session So, this planning session was to focus on, like, the strategy portion of the projects that we had prioritized, you know, for the next 12 to 24 months. And so, one project that I did want to just point out specifically, that we're just in the very beginning stages of looking at, but it's a microloan program for businesses, so I don't have a policy or any of, like, what the parameters might look like, but one of the first steps that I wanted to do was send out a survey to the businesses in Speedway, so that's all the businesses in Speedway, not just on Main Street, that we're interested in helping. I'm still working on gathering all the emails for those businesses, but I wanted to let you guys know, in case you received any questions about what that is, you can direct those to me, or if you have questions, we can talk about that one-on-one. And then Cheryl mentioned this, and I think, you know, most everybody knows and is super excited about the Borage opening, and I was also able to go to lunch there last week, and it's really amazing. The atmosphere is beautiful. I think it's just going to be a nice, different choice to all of our other wonderful restaurants that we have here in Speedway. We will be amending the EDA for that development, because we, we, the SRC did help with the purchase of equipment for that restaurant, and the transfer of a beer, wine, and liquor permit was the other thing that we did to help them, but just because the delay in opening of that restaurant, we just need to amend it, and now that we know the actual opening date, we can go ahead and do that final, final amendment for that equipment. The only other thing about that is, there was a really positive article that came out in the IBJ today, in case you didn't see it, you know, look it up and read it. It's really good. That's all I have. Questions?
All right, thank you, Carmen.
Thanks, Carmen.
Town Manager report?
Yep, I'll be brief. I just, I want to say that we put on one of the best events, I think, in the world, right, on race day, and it takes a lot of work, and I think we, we are able to put the best event on, because we have the best employees. I, you know, Rob's story of staying late, and Chief's story of being rained on, I mean, that's commitment, and we appreciate all that work. I also want to call out Cheryl for the great work she did at Rockin' on Main. I know she is a perfectionist and expects everything to go exactly as planned, and unfortunately, that just doesn't happen, but I tell her all the time, nobody knows, right? They had a great time, it was a great event, so good work. And it's also fun to, I mean, everybody puts in time, right? People were out there till midnight, and it was hot in the first of the day, then it was freezing and wet, and everybody had a great time. So, I appreciate all our staff and everything that they do, and they just make things look easy. So, that's all that I have tonight. I'm not going to belabor any, any points, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Grant. Council report from, let's start with Sarah.
Yeah, I feel like everything on my list was already touched on a little bit, so again, I'll be brief. I know it's getting late. I, again, also with the camps, again, having multiple kids in them, I appreciate those as a mom. And again, I think it just gives kids not only an opportunity to get busy, but to try different things. My girls have tried volleyball for the first time, they're loving it, you know, and so it's twofold, right? It gives them something to do, and it also gives them an experience to see a sport that they haven't, and to see the coach, you know, the varsity coaches and that, that's cool, and the girls that help, and the young men, so that. The other thing I really appreciate, again, as a parent as well, in the community, is the free lunches that are offered at the high school. I don't know if everybody knows that, but any child 18 and under can get a free lunch last week, which doesn't help you, but this week as well. Again, just, you don't have to qualify or anything, you can just go. You just show up, and again, the kids love it. They ditch me immediately and go find their friends, and then it's a fun way for them to get lunch. So, if you don't know that, take advantage of it, do. And then the ribbon cutting for Borage, I know, just being across the street the last three years and watching, 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 so excited to see them cut that ribbon. And again, we were able to jump over on Friday, a lot of our members after workout, and were able to see the space and enjoy it, so come out and support them. I know they've been working so hard. When we're there at 6:00 a.m., we see them working. When we leave, they're still working, so go support them, and yeah, the last thing I have is just the St. Chris Fair. So, I know a lot of people in town have memories of going to the fair. I know it's different. I know a lot of people are saying, why not the rides? And I said the same thing, but come out, support. There's still stuff for kids, there's all kinds of fun, so, and that's next weekend already, so it's coming up quick. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Council, Harold?
Yeah, just two quick things. Again, echoing the thank you to all town employees over the last month, month of May. Rob, I don't know if you remember this, but several years ago, when I was in college, I worked at the Streets Department with you, and I remember, not nearly as long as what you guys worked this month, but those long nights at the Streets Department. So, thank you all so very much. Doesn't go unnoticed by any means. And the second item, just wanted to call out, and Grant, this is probably going to turn into a small question for you, but just want to call out the, so the road and sidewalk improvements over in the Meadowwood area are ongoing. I know, I think a few of us have probably heard some, a few different, you know, concerns about some of the work along the way. If there are things that the public would like to bring up to us, or concerns with any of the work going on, what's the best way to do that?
They could just email or call me. So, I've received a couple of complaints over the past couple of weeks, and we try to address those as quickly as possible, so.
Yep, so perfect. So, yeah, we'll just, yeah, reach out to Grant if anything comes up in, on your property or around, or any concerns you have there. But other than that, that's all that I've got tonight.
All right, thank you. Council, Nabut.
Thank you. I'd like to, again, just kind of thank the public for a tremendous community engagement over, from Rockin' on Main to race day, to have people parking in your front yard all day. What was really amazing was to have the stands empty, and you think, you know, they're gone, and all of a sudden, they show back up, you know, from that standpoint. And I think our Police Department did a fantastic job of rolling with those fluctuations in traffic, and my hat goes off to you guys, and you did a fantastic job, especially with losing that many state policemen. They just can't take it like we can. I cannot, I...
We need them, I'm sitting next to you.
I know. But he wasn't there. But I appreciate it, thank you, and look forward to next year.
All right, thank you. Vice President, Sturgeon.
Yeah, just echo the sentiments of race day. With that many people with almost no incidents, you know, from a public safety concern, is amazing that, once you put everybody together, close to 400,000 people can get along, have a good time, grill out, eat, watch the race, all that stuff. I mean, it's what makes May in Speedway just special. So, big thanks to everybody. Kind of on another note, it is summertime. As you're out driving around, please be careful, because we've got more kids out on their bikes, skateboarding, whatever, so just, you know, pay attention as you're going through the streets, but just excited to be done with May, as I'm sure everybody else is.
All right, thank you. And nothing from me, so with that, I will adjourn our ninth meeting of 2024 at 8:16.
Did I win?